Good morning, everyone. I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the President of the Minneapolis City Council. Let's see. I'm going to go ahead and call our regular meeting for May 3rd to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Here.
Worsami is absent. Cunningham.
Present.
Ellison is absent. Goodman.
Present.
Johnson is absent. Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Conno.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Fletcher.
Here.
Jenkins.
Here.
President Bender.
Here.
There are 10 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum, and I'll note that councilmembers Johnson and Worsami are absent for personal business. Before we adopt the agenda, I do want to pause and note that we have an honorary resolution today to commemorate the life and public service of Donald M. Frazier. And I'd like to summarize some key points from that resolution, which will come up in our agenda later, and open it up and invite any colleagues that want to offer any comments that they may have. So whereas Don Frazier, one of the great sons of the city of Minneapolis, passed from this life this past Sunday, June 2nd, 2019, at the age of 95, surrounded by his family at his home, concluding a lifetime of extraordinary leadership, public service, and community activism; and whereas Don Frazier served his nation as a member of the United States Navy ROTC and was deployed to the Pacific Theater during World War II, he graduated from the University of Minnesota with a law degree and was admitted to the bar and was an attorney with a general law practice firm here in Minneapolis, all of which contributed to his lifelong passion for community service and politics; whereas Don Frazier had a truly distinguished political career, including service as a member of the Minnesota Senate, as a member of the United States House of Representatives, and the longest-serving mayor of the city of Minneapolis, during which time he championed and was a vocal advocate for progressive policies that included international human rights, housing, equality, early childhood education, environmental protections, ideas which he knew were important to secure a better future for the generations after him; and whereas Don Frazier was a role model and mentor to many, helping to identify, develop, and support new leaders at the local, state, and national levels throughout his life, doing so because he believed that leaders are responsible for bringing up the next generation; and whereas Don and his wife Arvonne are proud cheerleaders for the city of Minneapolis and dedicated their lives to the community and its people. Now therefore, the mayor and the city council do hereby adopt this honorary resolution to celebrate the life and lasting legacy of Donald M. Frazier and to recognize his many contributions to the city of Minneapolis, the state of Minnesota, and to the United States of America during a lifetime of incredible public service. So with that, I will pause and see if any folks want to speak, and I believe Mayor Frye maybe wants to kick us off.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for reading that poignant resolution. Don Frazier was a friend of mine, as was his wife Arvonne. They lived just a couple blocks away from me. And he served at a time when politicians and government workers were not necessarily like the biggest and the boldest and the most charismatic or the ones that had the most success. Don was an introvert in every sense of the word. He was tough, and he was vigorous, and he made sure that he got his ideas across. But when you were at a party with him, you barely knew he was there. He oftentimes would sort of stand over in the corner, didn't want to be the center of attention. And I think, but he cared so deeply about the work. He was really the epitome of a public servant. And I'll tell for my colleagues, you know, he served in the state legislature, he served in the United States Congress, and he served at the city of Minneapolis. And he always made a point to say that the work he enjoyed the most was right here. And it was because you could have this direct and tangible impact on people's lives, it was because you could make a decision, and within sometimes the matter of a couple of months, it was really clear whether that decision was a good one or a horrible one. And he liked that feedback. And him and his wife Arvonne were just an incredible team. They were incessantly involved even in neighborhood events, you know, right up until they died. And, you know, I think that he was their city's longest-serving mayor, and certainly a public servant that we'll never forget. So thank you. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else like to comment? Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender, and thank you, Mayor, for those words. I'm just going to add just a little bit on to what you shared. I've been lucky enough to represent them as the mayor was last term, and Don and Arvonne were very, very special people and were, I think, all really feeling the loss. It's been wonderful on Facebook in the last couple of days to watch everybody sharing their Don Frazier stories, and they're so varied. I mean, it was such a long life of public service. He really contributed in some remarkably creative and wonderful ways. I've seen people really commenting on the public education support and conversations that he and Arvonne pulled together for many, many years. I saw someone note the contributions that he made to establishing an American Indian Health Clinic, kind of finding a loophole in some federal laws that allowed us to establish a health clinic here in Minneapolis. And so when you look at the accumulated effect of 40 years of public service in all kinds of different ways, it's really a remarkable contribution, and we owe a huge debt of gratitude to Don, and we will miss him.
Thank you, councilmember. All right. Thank you. With that, I will go ahead and move on with our regular agenda. So we have the agenda for today's meeting before us. I'll ask if there are any amendments from councilmembers to the agenda. Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries, and the agenda is adopted. Next, we'll have the minutes from our May 17th meeting for acceptance. Is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries, and those minutes are accepted. And finally, we have the referrals, the petitions, communications, and reports. The proper committees may have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries, and those referrals are made. The next order of business is reports from our standing committees, and we begin with a report from the Committee of the Whole, presented by the Chair, Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Committee of the Whole brings forward one item today, which is the report of the 2019 Local Board of Appeal and Equalization, and I move this item.
The council vice president has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and that is adopted. Next, we have the report from the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing 12 items forward for approval this morning. Item number one is also a joint item with the MCDA Operating Committee, which will meet immediately after this meeting, and this is a bond issuance for the Minnesota Technology Education Corporation. Items two, three, four, and five are liquor license approvals. Item six are the liquor license approvals, and seven are renewals. Eight are the gambling license approvals. Nine is operating conditions for Racers, Cafe Racer Kitchen. Item 10 is a contract amendment with Employ Milwaukee. Item 11 is a rental license reinstatement. And item 12 is the final approval from the city of Minneapolis for an issuance of a grant and loan to complete the Capri Theater renovation, which hopefully will get underway yet this year. With that, I'm happy to answer questions and move items 1 through 12 for approval.
Chair Goodman has moved the EDRS report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. The next report is from the Housing Policy and Development Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, President Bender. The Housing Policy and Development Committee is bringing seven items forward for consideration. The first has to do with approval and some amendments to our 2019 Consolidated Action Plan. Some of the changes had to do with the fact that we got more money than we expected and allocated through our budget process. So we are moving to approve that, and I'll just note that I'll be moving Ways and Means Amendment in terms of the excess funding to focus it in three programs: lead reduction, multifamily affordable housing, and homeownership support and development programs. The second item is a passage of resolution approving our Housing Replacement District Four Tax Increment Financing Plan. The third item is extending exclusive development rights for Snelling Yards Development at 3601 44th Street. The fourth item is authorizing an agreement with Towerside Innovation District to implement some of our Metropolitan Council grants having to do with the Fourth Street infrastructure there. The fifth item is approving Round Four Guidelines and a Passive Housing Funding Pilot Addendum to our Minneapolis Homes Development Assistant Program. Our sixth item is authorizing the request for proposals for housing opportunities for persons with AIDS. And our final item is approving the Missing Middle Housing Pilot Program and issuing a request for proposals for that. I'm happy to stand for any questions, but I will move the entire committee report forward for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and that report is adopted. Next is the report from the Intergovernmental Relations Committee, and that report will be given by its Vice Chair, Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. The Intergovernmental Relations Committee brings forward one item today, which is the approval of the resolution ranking, the 2020 Capitol Budget Request. And I would note that one item was omitted from this request for police wellness. It's only to get more data and information before we move it forward, and we can still get that item in in July if that data becomes available, but I move approval of this item.
Council Vice President has moved the IGR report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and that report is adopted. Next is the report from the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee, given by the Chair, Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. The Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee brings forward eight items for approval today. The first is approving city council appointments for the Southside Green Zone. For the Southside Green Zone. The second is approving council and mayoral appointments to the Transgender Equity Council. The third is a contract amendment with Braich Healthcare Partners LLC for the Health Department School-based clinic program. Item number four is authorizing contracts with Mad Dads, Hennepin Theater Trust, St. Stephen's Human Services, and Green Minneapolis for downtown violence prevention. Item number five is a grant application to the Center for Prevention at Blue Cross Blue Shield of Minnesota for funds supporting community-driven, local policy aimed at decreasing sugary beverage consumption. Item number six is a series of transfers of the 2019 Sustainability Franchise Fee Funds to the Health Department for Green Cost Share and Urban Trees Program. And item number seven is a transfer of the 2019 Sustainability Franchise Fee Funds to SEEPED to support the development of passive housing. And item number eight is two staff directions related to the progress report on the city community-wide 100% renewable electric blueprint. I move these eight items for approval, and I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chair. Cunningham has moved the PEC report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and those items are adopted. Next is the Transportation and Public Works Committee report, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee forwards 13 items today. Item one is the temporary easement agreement for McNair Avenue South Sanitary Reconstruction Project. Item two is the 18th Avenue Northeast Street Reconstruction Project. Item three is the Gerard Avenue South Street Reconstruction Project. That'll go from Lake Street to Lagoon Avenue. Item four is the Adina Art Fair Large Block Event Permit from May 31st to June 2nd. Item five is the Minneapolis Mile Car Show Large Block Event from June 30th to 2019. Item six is the biennial agreement with the State of Minnesota. It keeps jumping out. For the routine maintenance. Item seven is the agreement with the Minnesota Department of Transportation for Utility Relocation. Item eight is the Highway Turnback deed from the state of Minnesota for land adjacent to Trunk Highway 55. Item nine is the pedestrian streetlight corridor amendment to the street lighting plan, contract amendment with the Meyer Contract Incorporated, and that's a reimbursement from the Ballpark Authority. Item 10 is the bid for the 20 Avenue South Bridge Replacement Project. Item 11 is the bid for the catch base and manhole repairs. 12 is the bid for the 2019 Concrete Pavement Rehabilitation Project. And 13 is the 2019 Public Works Week designation of that recognition. Madam President, I move all items.
Councilmember Reich has moved the TBW report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and those items are adopted. Next, we have the Report from the Ways and Means Committee, presented by that committee's Vice Chair, Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender. The Ways and Means Committee brings forward 10 items for approval this morning. The first is a legal settlement with Clifford Johnson. The second is a legal settlement with Nationwide Insurance Company. Item number three is authorizing the city to join an amicus brief in Columbus v. Trump. Item number four is accepting the sole bid for painting of the public service building project. Items five through nine are contract amendments for existing contracts with the public service building project. And item number 10 is gift acceptance from the Field Regina North Neighborhood Group for donation of a public safety security camera. I move all items for approval.
Councilmember Fletcher has moved the Ways and Means Report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
Those items carry. So finally, we have the report from the Zoning and Planning Committee, which will be given by the Vice Chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee forwards three items today. Item one is a moratorium waiver for Lewis Pipe and Tobacco at 825 Nicklet Mall. Item two is a moratorium waiver for River Mart at 1701 44th Avenue North. And with that, I will be instructing staff to have findings of fact to support that motion. And there's two sort of items that were a distillation of the discussion in committee. One pertains to its location and not having significant impact, and two, the other finding relates to staff's determination that it won't negatively impact the planning process, which is the basis for the moratorium in the first place. Item three is the rezoning for Wilson-Molina 2521 Bloomington Avenue. With that, Madam President, I move all items, noting the instruction for findings of fact for item two.
Councilmember Reich has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
No one. Number two, aye on the others.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes on the report except for number two, which has 10 ayes in one name.
Those items carry, and the report is adopted. My speaker management has shut down, so if you want to speak, just catch my attention some other way. Thank you. So let's see. So those items carry and are adopted. The next order of business is reports from special committees, and we have a report from the Executive Committee, which will be presented by Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. The Executive Committee brings forward two items today. Item number one is referring to the Ways and Means Committee and increase in the plumber salary schedule. Item number two is referring to the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee, the appointment of Kim Keller to the position of Director of Regulatory Services, and I move both items.
Council Vice President has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes on the report except for number two, which has 10 ayes in one name.
Those items carry, and the report is adopted. My speaker management has shut down, so if you want to speak, just catch my attention some other way. Thank you. So let's see. So those items carry and are adopted. The next order of business is reports from special committees, and we have a report from the Executive Committee, which will be presented by Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. The Executive Committee brings forward two items today. Item number one is referring to the Ways and Means Committee and increase in the plumber salary schedule. Item number two is referring to the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee, the appointment of Kim Keller to the position of Director of Regulatory Services, and I move both items.
Council Vice President has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and those items are adopted. The other item of unfinished business pertains to the proposed amendment to the city charter to implement a biennial budget process. This item is returned to us by the Charter Commission with a favorable recommendation to pursue this amendment by ordinance. It is now in order for us to refer this matter to the Intergovernmental Relations Committee for the purpose of setting a public hearing on that proposal. I'll recognize Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to thank the Charter Commission for all of their work and the public hearing they held about this. I want to thank our finance department, including our budget director, our city attorney and coordinator's offices. I want to thank the mayor and his staff. I want to thank the Board of Estimate and Taxation and the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board for a lot of thorough consideration of this. The Park Board's finance team actually has spent an immense amount of time on considering this type of change to our budgeting. The transmission of this amendment from the Charter Commission is timely because we also wrapped up results Minneapolis meetings this week. It's a process we're developing that puts a strong focus on increased transparency and participation about what our priorities are and should be as a city. I feel strongly it will complement a biennial budgeting cycle when we have an opportunity to dive even deeper into department budgets. So I wanted to remind my colleagues that the path this amendment is currently on is that of an amendment by ordinance, so this will be another public hearing in IGR in conversation with that chair on July 24th potentially, and then it would come back to council for a vote. If you have any questions or concerns, please tell me or my staff. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Palmasano, as we move to refer the proposed charter amendment to the IGR Committee for setting a public hearing, is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
meeting the subject matter of an ordinance to amend the housing code and the licenses and business regulations code to address short-term rental dwelling units and related platforms. Finally, councilmembers Cunningham and Ellison give notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting the subject matter of an ordinance to amend the housing code to address rental dwelling license reinstatement requirements related to management plans to be approved by the Police Department. Are there any questions on any of these notices? Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to briefly speak to this, to item number six, for clarification, that this is specifically when in regards to when a rental license has -- when a dwelling has been sold, and then a new rental license has been established. So, just to clarify, this is in alignment with the Conduct on Licensed Premises overhaul that we did last year, and just wanted to make sure that folks understood exactly how that fit into it. So, this is specifically for when a house is sold or a unit is sold, and then a rental license is reestablished. What we saw is that folks were reestablishing licenses and had to have police management plans, and they were no longer applicable. And so, I just wanted to clarify on the record how that fits into it. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else want to comment on the notice announcements? Okay. Seeing none, those notices are given, and no further action is required. Those will come back at the next regular meeting of the city council. The next order of business is resolutions, and we have the honorary resolution for Don Fraser. All in approval of that resolution, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries, and the resolution is adopted. And that brings us next to the orders of unfinished business. There is one item that was postponed from the last regular meeting, which is a license application from the Blue Door for permanent expansion of on-sale wine with strong beer and the addition of sidewalk cafe with 15 seats. This was postponed by the EDRS Committee, and I'll recognize the Chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to move to postpone items 1.1 and 1.3, but approve items 1.2 with the adoption of the revised business license operating conditions that you see in front of you.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman has moved to postpone the item as described, and then to move to approve the second one. Is there any discussion on those items? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and those items are adopted. The other item of unfinished business pertains to the proposed amendment to the city charter to implement a biennial budget process. This item is returned to us by the Charter Commission with a favorable recommendation to pursue this amendment by ordinance. It is now in order for us to refer this matter to the Intergovernmental Relations Committee for the purpose of setting a public hearing on that proposal. I'll recognize Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to thank the Charter Commissions -- the Charter Commission for all of their work and the public hearing they held about this. I want to thank our finance department, including our budget director, our city attorney and coordinator's offices. I want to thank the mayor and his staff. I want to thank the Board of Estimate and Taxation and the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board for a lot of thorough consideration of this. The Park Board's finance team actually has spent an immense amount of time on considering this type of change to our budgeting. The transmission of this amendment from the Charter Commission is timely because we also wrapped up results Minneapolis meetings this week. It's a process we're developing that puts a strong focus on increased transparency and participation about what our priorities are and should be as a city. I feel strongly it will complement a biennial budgeting cycle when we have an opportunity to dive even deeper into department budgets. So, I wanted to remind my colleagues that the path this amendment is currently on is that of an amendment by ordinance, so this will be another public hearing in IGR in conversation with that chair on July 24th potentially, and then it would come back to council for a vote. If you have any questions or concerns, please tell me or my staff. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Palmasano has moved to refer the proposed charter amendment to the IGR Committee for setting a public hearing. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and so those will be going to the IGR Committee. Finally, we have the order of announcements. Are there any announcements from councilmembers? Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Earlier in my career, I led the Illinois Coalition to abolish the death penalty, and the abolition of the death penalty is, in the United States, is a cause that's near and dear to my heart. I'm proud to live in a state of Minnesota that abolished the death penalty in 2011. At the time, Representative McKenzie said, "They'll let us bar this thing of vengeance and furies from the confines of our great state. Never again let the great seal of the state of Minnesota be affixed to a warrant to take a human life." And while in some ways this has been a year to celebrate, with New Hampshire becoming